Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 22, 2017, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis is excused. Mrs. Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Has the meeting improperly posted, Dr. Patz?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item four is community comment. There is no one present, so we'll move on to item five, consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen and second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Do we have any announcements? Nothing today? Okay. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular school board meeting, March 8, 2017, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM, and a regular board meeting, March 22, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Item eight, our liaison reports. Are there any board liaison reports today?
I will say that I did have a phone call from Mr. Melzer, and we chatted about the bid or the borrowing that we also have on the agenda today, so he updated me on that. And we did talk a little bit about the Treasury report, but otherwise, that's kind of in the focus. And the budget has not started yet, although we did also chat a little bit about the state budget, which appears to be good news if everything makes it through.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I have nine reports and presentations. We have 9A, the Elm Brook 66.03 agreement. This is an action item. Ms. Freeman.
Yes, this is our agreement with the Elm Brook district for tuition for one of our students who's placed there with a disability.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions on the agreement?
For what school year, Karen? For next school year.
I actually do have a question. So we're indicating we're declining some of the services, but we're accepting the autism intellectual disabilities. One, is that?
No, isn't it an issue of declining? They were all listed as possibilities, and we had to indicate which services we were looking for. So this is not a student who needed the other services. I think they had hearing impairment and vision services, so we selected the services that were required per the IP.
Okay. And then with the handwritten note in here, pending any other decision of IP team, our current student is a senior? So if this is for next year, is it possible that we may not have anybody placed in this program?
Students with disabilities can be educated up to the age of 21. So in terms, the annual IP for the student that will extend into next school year has not been held yet. So right now, we're anticipating that the services that are listed on the agreement are the services that will be required, but that can change at the annual IP meeting.
Thank you.
Do they explain to you why the costs go up so much? Because they did go up quite a bit from last year.
Correct. The program has been given a one-year continuance. They're planning to close the program. So districts that have students that are placed there, I believe it's a shared cost. So I think that at this point, knowing that they are most likely going to close after next year, they probably aren't taking in new students. It's a guess on my part, but I think that that's the reason for the change.
Larry, just so, see you have a little learning curve. 66.30 agreements are agreements we get into for a variety of reasons with districts, a culmination of districts, to provide services that we ordinarily wouldn't have a person on our staff to handle because it'd be limited time. So we have sort of a consortium of schools, in this particular case, is to provide the therapies that Ms. Freeman just outlined, and it's an annual event, and it changes every year, so it fluctuates.
Okay. Do we have, like, reciprocal agreements with other schools that are bringing students to us?
Not like, not in a 66.30 format, no.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2017-18 Elm Brook 66.03 agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you. And the next item is 9B, the resolution awarding the sale of $33,310,000 general obligation, school building and improvement bonds. Action item, Mr. Melzer.
Yes. In order to construct the new forest park, we need to sell bonds, and today was the largest share of that. We took bids on that. As part of the process, we're also rated by Moody's Investor Service each time we do this. And I spent about an hour on the phone with the analyst from Moody's in New York, and they came out with their rating. We did receive a AA2, which is very good, and we really can't progress beyond that until our community gets larger. Part of it's based on the value of the community. So until we get bigger, we probably can't get any farther than that. But they did note our solid financial position with strong operating history in the report. And at the end, the analyst thanked us for making her job so easy. So it was a very nice, very nice phone call. So today we took bids on the bonds. We received six bids, anywhere from 3.4229 down to the winning bid of 3.3326 from Piper Jeffrey. And tonight, to move ahead with this, we just need the board to approve the resolution.
So then I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution awarding the sale of $33,310,000 general obligation, school building and improvement bonds. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Is there any discussion?
Do we have the final document?
The final resolution is attached to the agenda item. Yeah, we just got that this afternoon.
Also, okay. So the rate is in here?
Yeah, it's on page...
Why don't you swap it out? Because I checked this morning and it wasn't.
No, we get them till the afternoon because they take the bids in the morning, and then all the documents have to be redone.
Seventeen, Linda.
Seventeen?
And then eighteen, or nineteen, it actually talks about, no, I'm sorry, twenty, it talks about, oh, it actually came in better than what the original bid was for, right, Jim?
Do you have Moody's report in here also?
I don't have that attached, but I can attach that report, too.
Yeah, if you could show that, I'd appreciate that.
Question I had regarding the timeline. So we put these out for bid.
Right.
We got these bids, and Piper Jeffrey came in at the lowest bid, but now we need the resolution passed by the board to actually execute the sale?
To accept the bid.
To accept the bid. Okay.
Essentially.
Okay. So I was reading earlier, it said something about these were sold, and it had a timestamp of 10 o'clock this morning.
Right.
Thinking, well, we didn't even have the board meeting until tonight, so that's why I just wanted to ask how that really worked.
Yeah, everything, they're the low bid, they've been notified, they're the low bidder. They gave us a deposit of about $600,000, and now everything's on hold until after this meeting. If you approve the resolution, then it all starts in motion again, and then they're ready for the closing date, and everything moves forward.
So everything was contingent this morning, nothing, yeah, okay, I was just trying to be clear on the timeline, that's all.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this official statement, is it confidential? Or is it, it's open to the public?
Yeah, it was, all the bidders had a chance to look at that.
Well, I mean, is it just for the bidders, or is it open for a public to see?
It's really created just for the bidders, and it's information that they look for when they're deciding if they want to bid, and if they want to bid, where they're going to come in on an interest rate. So that's why it's put together. I don't think it's usually shared with the public.
It's just a really informative document.
Oh, okay.
My understanding is that this is a preliminary official statement, and the final official statement is actually, because these bonds are sold to a wholesaler, and they will actually sell them on the market, and that's when this statement is made available to the ultimate holders of the bond.
And they would want to see it, too.
So it's a very public document.
It's preliminary for a long time, though.
Closing. Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Okay. Item 9C is the WASB Annual Board Development Survey Discussion. I put this on here because Dr. Patz and I received an email from Bill Foster, who is representing WASB for this survey, that we all took it last year as a board for WASB. Do you all remember taking it? And the reason we didn't get it this year was because we had a board meeting, and no one attended the regional meeting. So it's not a big deal. It's just, I wanted to ask if you wanted to take it. But this year, because we revamped our own survey, we spent a lot of time doing that, our board evaluation, I didn't think that we need to, and that's my opinion, bring it back to the board to have a big discussion, because it's just like our other survey, other evaluation that we took, and I think it takes away from what we're planning on doing for our evaluation. So I just thought, in my opinion, I think we don't, we aren't asked to do that much for WASB, and I think it's beneficial to them that we take it. It takes 10 minutes, maybe 15 minutes, to do it, and then you're allowed to go on as a board individually and look at it, look at the results from our board, but I think it helps them. So I just wanted to ask you if you wanted to take it. Larry, again, you haven't been here, so that you wouldn't, you could go on and take it if you want, from, you know, the monkey bit here to be here, but I don't think you really have any input for it. So it would really be the six board members that have been here all year, take it, and then we can just look at it, like if you did last year. But I wouldn't expect us to come back and talk about it here, if that's, so I just want consensus to know if we want to do it.
I think it gives us how we might compare to, you know, statewide, other boards. Don't they kind of keep it?
No, that's the thing. We can only look at our board. In order to look statewide, they, WASB, looks at it statewide, but they want to charge us, like, $250 to look statewide. And I don't think that type of survey we discussed, it isn't valuable to us. It's the same, it's based on the key work of school boards, but it's just what we were doing previously, so we determined that wasn't valuable to us. So...
So we do this just to give WASB some feedback?
Yeah, they ask every school board to do it, and it's valuable to them.
I'd be fine taking it.
Yeah.
Until you say the word.
I'd be fine taking it.
I think, yeah, I don't see any harm taking it.
Absolutely.
I mean, they...
We don't have to.
Remember, we got a link and a password or something? Is that how that works?
I mean, like, Tim and Linda are the only ones who take it. We're good with that?
I don't know.
Are they throwing it out?
Yeah. Well, I don't think it's valuable unless we try to all take it, but, like I said, it's, you know, it's just multiple choice, going down the line, real quick, how you feel we are in each of the areas of the key work of school boards. So you usually come in, they found last year, the state came in low legislative-wise, and they'll probably come out the same way this year. I don't know if they have any other questions, but I doubt it. So, you know, we're seeing if anybody improved.
Okay. Then I'd be delighted to take it.
Okay. If you want to, then if we're all in agreement, I'll send a link out tonight. And, you know, we do have the superintendent's evaluation to do, so if you want to take it after that, maybe next week or the week after. And then I'll send a link so that you can check on our own results on your own. So that's that. Thank you. And then item 9D is superintendent's report, school start date and construction update.
If we could start with the school start date. In front of you, you have a sample resolution. This is really sort of a template that many districts throughout the state are using. We pretty much took it and infused our school district name and so on. All it really is, is currently, the state of Wisconsin has a mandatory start date of September, October 4, September 1. And depending on Labor Day is and so on, something that could be one way or the other. But the issue is, that really drives this, is the tourism industry. And there are more and more school districts who are really being vocal about the fact that the tourism industry doesn't affect their school districts. Their kids aren't involved in the water parks at the Dells or wherever they may be, and many districts want to be able to start school earlier, for a variety of reasons. To get out earlier would be one. The tourism industry is fighting it. They're not in support of bringing it back, I guess, to the way it used to be with local board control. But more and more school districts are adopting resolutions, saying that our board is in favor of us controlling when we do the school start date and not letting it be controlled by the legislature or, in this particular case, the tourism industry, so that if we have the desire to go forward with an August, whatever the date might be, we can do so. Personally, I think it's a good thing for us to be able to start when we want to. There's a lot of benefits to have that flexibility, but at the same time, you know, right now, it's the law. So this is just simply meant to present the board with a sample resolution. If you feel it's appropriate and would approve it, then what I would do is be sending it, send it forward to WASB, the legislature, our local representatives, so that they know that the board's stance on this is to repeal the current state law regarding the school start date, and that we want to sort of zero it out and let us be able to start when we want to. So...
Well, I'm in favor of this, and I, you know, I think we should have local control over items like this. And also, and Tim was at the delegate assembly, and they were, the delegates were in favor of this, correct?
This originally came up at the delegate assembly as a K through 8 early start proposal to try and extend an olive branch, maybe meet halfway a little bit on some of this. Because if the people, the businesses in the state that are, that do rely on the tourism, mostly northern Wisconsin, I guess, would have, or rather, wouldn't have third graders working for them, they would have the high schoolers. So that's why they're saying, okay, so keep it in place for the high school, but not for K through 8. Well, then, that quickly got amended to K through 12. Everyone in the room said, you know, if we're going to do this, let's just put it through as the full K through 12. So that was really how the proposal ended up, and that's how it passed. K through 12. So that, I guess, would be the official WASB stance from the delegation to the legislature as a K through 12. So my question I would have on here, so this is something that would establish essentially a position statement from our board, saying, here's what we'd like to have in place? Is that what you're looking for?
And all it's saying is, we would like to be able to determine our own start date. That's it.
So with the language, where in the second paragraph, relating to extraordinary reasons, is there something in there that would said that, like, from the state standpoint, we would have to provide them our reasons, which would have to be extraordinary, to request an earlier start date? Or is this language we chose, or?
Well, this is one that, the template, but it refers to those school districts, and there are a few that are asking for exemptions, and mainly it's due to construction issues, where construction is going to prevent them from being done, or the construction being completed in time for a school start, or on the back end, where they get out late or they have to leave early, and can they start? So, but the DPI and the, well, DPI is not approving very many of those unless you got one heck of a good reason. The other part of this is that in the state budget, there's also provision that is going to allow part of the Milwaukee Public School system to be able to do this. So now, all of a sudden, we're picking and choosing who we can let do it and who we're not going to let do it. And I don't think that's right either. So...
The 1719 budget? The one that's coming up for debate? Oh, or, okay.
So are you asking for us to approve this as it's written right now?
Well, I guess just to approve a resolution, and we can, you know, if there's any interest in modifying it. This is, like I said, this is a template that the five districts that I talked to, they're all using the same exact template, just because it's pretty simple and straightforward.
Would you see this leading to a revision of the policy for the calendar? So that would come up, or how would the dates be chosen? Would just, would it be a board decision? Would it be an administration decision? How?
It's like our calendar, Judy, matter of fact, we were talking today, she's going to be doing the calendar for 1819, I guess it is. No, yeah. And so if this were to go through, and we had that, then we're going to have to take a look. Okay, when do we really want to start school? You know, do we want to start on August 17? Quite honestly, if we listen to parents, we could start August 1, and a lot of them would be happy. But the reality is, in my opinion, in the years that I've been in, kids aren't ready to go back to school much earlier than September 1.
It's also problematic when September 1, for example, is on a Thursday. You know, how do you start school on a Thursday, and then you're off Labor Day on Monday? So then you technically don't start school till September 5. So that September 1 date has been problematic for some time, and, you know, we'll be much better to start earlier, prior to that.
And that's a little bit of the irony, too, because that's happening, it's happened more than once, but with some other districts that start late, their kids are getting out later. Well, now these kids, according to the tourism industry's argument, they're not available to come and work for them anyway. And then the other half of that is tourism industry is saying that most people take, or a large faction of people, take vacations at the end of August. I don't buy that at all, because there are too many kids that are involved in co-curricular sports, football, cross-country, volleyball, those kinds of things, where, or working their own jobs, that I'd like to see some data on that, but I don't think it's accurate.
But this is just a resolution saying we support it, but if it would happen, you still might consider consulting other school districts to see what they're doing, too, right?
Sure.
Look, surrounding ones.
You mentioned five districts you talked with on this one. Which five were those?
Black River Falls, Seneca, Monroe, Menominee, and St. Croix.
Okay. And in some of your discussions, maybe with your own administrative team, where you think, it just a little bit talks about maybe stretching out the holidays or adding more days for continuing education, or would you be looking at more getting them out earlier, like in May, or a combination of all of them?
I think a combination of all of them, Tim. You know, our kids, a lot of them want to get to work and, you know, get their jobs, especially kids that are seniors that get going. But then, at the same time, if, depending on when certain holidays fall, we might want to, you know, if it's a Wednesday, do we want to take that whole week off, or Easter, you know, spring break? We've got an issue with spring break next year or the year after?
1819. Spring break will be very late.
Just in terms of how late it is, that kind of thing. So to answer your question, it's a combination of looking at all those things.
So are you looking for action on this one?
Yes.
So...
Would the dates be changed?
Pardon me?
The dates?
Yeah, yeah, we would.
It says March 8.
Yeah, we would put today's date in.
Oh.
Does the board want to take time to read this more thoroughly right now?
I'd like to read the result paragraph a little bit.
Okay. I guess, I thought, so this current state budget does not change the start date?
No, not the current one.
The current one. I thought I saw something on WASB.
But it says it's allowing Milwaukee's district to provide exceptions to this, and that is in the 2017.
Oh, it's only Milwaukee has it.
Does everyone have enough time to read it? So the date on here then would be today's date, dated this day, the 22nd of February, and resolve further than on February 22nd. I just have one comment that, and I know this has nothing to do with the resolution, but if this would happen, I mean, right now, operation-wise, since Act 10, the calendar doesn't come to the board anymore. But if this would happen, would the state, you know, changing the start date, I know, maybe might want to consider not having the board approve the calendar, but just letting us know ahead of time what's going on?
Oh, sure.
Because if it fluctuates a lot, we might hear more from parents. So it might be nice to know before you approve the calendar what you're planning on doing.
Well, we would probably do a survey. If we had the opportunity to do this, we'd probably do a parent survey, just to get some input from the kids and the parents themselves.
Yeah.
Just one correction. The calendar does come to the board. It just doesn't go, there's no negotiation.
Negotiated.
What the calendar is, but it comes.
We don't approve the board.
No.
Not the calendar. No, we don't approve the calendar any longer.
There is no policy.
It's just informative?
Board policy regarding the calendar.
So we're just informed of the calendar?
Yes.
I see.
We only approve our calendar, our board calendar.
For our meetings, yeah, okay.
So I think for this resolution, we'll look for a roll call vote. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Franklin School Board Resolution on school start date change. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Okay, the motion carries then. 6-0, and can we record it, Megan, 6-0-1, as one board member absent for that?
Okay. In regards to the school building project, we had a lengthy meeting on Monday again with the architects. At this one, we brought in engineers for the heating ventilation, electrical, plumbing, IT, and those kinds of things, along with the initial part of the, the front end of the meeting was for us to take a look at the design again and spaces, and we took out some walls, and we moved some spaces around, and we're really getting it to the point where we think we're going to have something pretty finalized pretty quick. So that's going very well. We then followed that meeting up with a meeting with the city. It was a very positive meeting. We met with, Jim, help me, I forget, just lost, Joe Deal. And that one was just mainly for the discussions of making sure the city's communicated timelines and expectations for what we have to have in, how much we have to have in, you know, how many copies, are they large copies or small copies? Those seem to be pretty incidental types of things, but in the past, there was some confusion on that, so I think we got that all straightened away. So right now, we're in the process, mainly of doing DNR, looking at setbacks and those kinds of things. As an example, part of the parking lot of the existing middle school is going to be part of the new parking lot, but we're going to want to curb it. And what we can't do is go out even an inch further than the existing edge of the blacktop right now. So we've got to come in, and they will come in and literally put an orange fence up and mark it and do those kinds of things to make sure we don't violate any of those kinds of things. We also have to have, and this was a factor in terms of how the building is going to set and where it's going to set, we have wetland issues that we have to make sure we stay away from with setbacks and so on and so forth. Nothing major, we don't think, at least that was, Jim, did you get that same impression from those people, that we don't really see anything of issue there?
No.
Another big area was parking. We're going to have on the new site, 465 parking spots. We will be taking a look at the size of those spots, because that number could change. And it also goes back down to the calculation of those parking spots in terms of site. This building is part of the new construction site. So the parking spots that we have right here have to be counted into that total. So that puts another dimension that we have to be thinking about. Then there was discussion about trees and how many trees we would have to move. There was a neighbor somewhere on the southern boundary that had called the city and was concerned about any trees that we were going to take down. And then our neighbor to the east, who we've been talking with, we have no intent of taking trees down, especially on the southern boundary. That's, I think the confusion may have been, okay, you're going to tear that building down, then are you going to go into that area and start taking trees down, too? Absolutely not. You know, that'll just be, wherever that building is, is where we're going to put those fields and so on. And our western boundary, Joe had gotten a call from...
had gotten a call from probably that resident, but he didn't say for sure. But that resident did talk to me personally about it. There's a dip in there that retains a lot of water. And we noticed it. It's something we want to correct, because we, we don't want that water draining that way. We gotta find out where we can best make that water run to in terms of runoff. So, overall, the meeting was very good, very informative. Timelines are down. I think the architects, the engineers, everybody knows exactly what they have to do. It'll take a month or two for us to be able to get some of the plans together, to be able to show them where we're going, what our easements are, where our setbacks are, those kinds of things. But Joe didn't see any, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, Joe didn't see any major issues on this particular project?
No, and he was very helpful.
Yeah.
Did he say anything about a sidewalk down?
Yes. Yeah, the sidewalk to the east, yeah.
We have to have a sidewalk.
Southside road. Well, he didn't say we had to, did he? He said it was recommended?
Recommended is have to.
Yeah. That's right, that was in my notes. Recommended, he will do it.
And that, that wasn't in our original plans, was it?
Right, no. But the, the issue there is, is that, okay, what are you gonna do with it? Because it's gonna stop it at a boundary over there. Who's gonna, and how are they gonna continue that on to 76th Street, which would be the intent, I believe?
Well, they won't unless something is built, you know, reshuffled around. That's just the way it goes.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's what Joe says, well, you know, it'll be there, but until we have money to do it, it's not gonna happen. So, so we'll have a sidewalk that goes nowhere.
Yeah, there's a lot of those. Did, did he say anything about, about shrubbery or anything, you know, like in the high school, how much we'll need?
Yeah, it's a five, five pieces of shrubbery for every parking spot or thereabouts, but it's small, it's big, it's, it's a pretty complex formula. But we can also count existing trees and so on and so forth that are on the property, which in that particular case over there isn't many. But if we, they're gonna be out counting trees, but if we can use some of the ones that are sort of hidden, that'll, that'll help.
So what are the parking goals? The 420, 465 is what you wanted, or do you want to maximize that, or what?
They tell you how many you can put based on size.
Oh, there's a maximum?
Yeah, the city's got requirements and how many you can do, and how many, you know, the size of them. You may recall, when we went on the high school edition, we had quite a, when we went before the city council, we had to ask for a change in their policy or their, their way of doing business, because they wanted larger park, it was larger parking stalls. And we said, we don't need those, that big a parking stall. We wanted smaller ones. And, and that was mainly due because we had so many tiers up there, in terms of layers of groundwork and escalating terrain and so on. So, and I recall pretty vividly that at that meeting, they said, this is gonna allow the schools to do this, only the schools to do this forever. That's, that's the change they're gonna make, so. But Joel, he thought he recommended or heard that, but he's going back and checking.
I don't remember hearing that.
I do.
I remember, I remember the problem. Did, now, our impact fees are in our, already in our budget, but are, are the permit fees and everything in the budget?
For the construction?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be part of the whole referendum budget, yeah.
But I mean, did we already, did we already include that?
Well, we don't know what they are yet.
We don't know yet, okay.
Yeah. That'll be an interesting discussion, I think, because I don't know how they're gonna register us as being a, if they look at that building and say, well, it's gonna have increased usage, well, okay, you could say that, because we're adding a grade level. But then what about us taking that away from the other buildings? And if I recall, right on the other one, they said, we don't really care. You know, once, once you've established a, a number in terms of people that are gonna occupy that building, that's the way it is.
Now, being the new guy here, the city of Franklin exempts their own construction from permit fees. I've seen that in writing. Isn't this basically part of Franklin's government?
No.
No. I would tell you, this is the first place I've ever been where a city does not waive the fees for the school district, because we are such a vibrant part of the community. And we're, you know, sort of a double taxation when you start laying, putting fees on us. For example, though, we were told, you still, at our meeting on Monday, in Beaver Dam, their district went to their city council and said, here's what we're doing. And the city council says, fine, we're waiving all fees and everything like that, just go get it done. We have gotten substantial amounts of fees assessed to us on the high school project.
That's nuts.
And I guess over the years, too, would that be safe, Jim?
Agreed, whichever way you want to put it.
Yeah, I mean, is it time to have that conversation again and see if there's a change that can be made?
Yep.
Because I think this is something that, you know, maybe needs to have a little bit of pushback, but also needs, the story needs to get out there. Why, why would our, the city, as a taxing authority, charge fees to another entity that's a taxing authority that has only one place to get their money, which is the residents of the town, that is gonna pay the city workers salaries anyway for doing all these inspections and stuff? So, I mean, it's, I don't know, that's my position.
And the city attorney is on our side, was on our side, but...
You got it overruled by the council?
Well, I think it's worth exploring again, and I think it's worth getting that word out to see if they can have a, have a change of their position.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
Well, what's, what's unique about that is Jim served on the committee, I don't know how many years ago that was, Jim, in terms of impact fees. And at that time, it was determined that the school would be, the school district would be exempt from those kinds of fees. And Mayor Taylor, Tom Taylor, recalls that as well, and has said the school, or the city attorney did, too. But that didn't carry any weight with the council, they still assessed the fees.
I mean, the reality of it is, we have a $43 million and change ceiling on what it's for. But let's just say, if this were to come in under budget, or if the fees that we budgeted now don't need to get paid, theoretically, we wouldn't have to spend all of that. Certainly can't spend more, but you can spend less. Now we're giving some of that money back to our residents by not having all that borrowed and have the money go on raising in the property taxes. So, I mean, that, that's part of the benefit here, too, right? I don't know what the fees would totally amount to, but there could be a savings there.
And there is no, no new infrastructure required as far as hookups or anything?
You mean, like our laterals for water and those kinds of things?
Right, right.
Shouldn't be. I don't know the ins and outs of that, that's...
Right, we haven't gotten that far. But they do, they do come straight down the road here, so I'm assuming we could hook up off of those unless there's something wrong with them and they want to start over with a, you know, a new pipe or something like that.
We did have a little bit of a discussion regarding a right turn lane coming out of the property, as well as a right turn coming in off Forest Hill. They were receptive to that. There was a mention of putting a roundabout out here, but consensus, I think, was, was there's not enough room to do that. But they are pretty intent on looking at putting a roundabout at 51st and Drexel, which would have to be a substantial one, because there's a lot of big traffic that goes through there in terms of semis and buses and so on, so. So it won't be long, we'll bring something to the board to at least give you a visual of what the footprint looks like. And it's, it's starting to take shape, but we got a lot of work to do yet. The last thing I'd like to just mention, that's not on the agenda, but I just want to mention that today, Judy and I, along with Nick Cohen's wife, went to Madison, because Nick received the Administrator of the Year Award, a year award from the Wisconsin School Counselors Association for the leadership that he provided in taking our, well, you saw it here when the counselors made their presentation. That whole program has just really done a 180, and has really blossomed and doing some great work. Along with that, Joyce Hamm was, received the Secretary Support Staff Person of the Year Award for all the work that she did in backing this up. And if you recall, we had a Counselor of the Year Award, and we've really got a strong team, and that whole, over the last year and a half, two years, that whole group has really, really done a nice job, and under Nick's leadership and so on, and the people that are involved in it, accepting some change and responsibility, so it's going really well. So, so our congratulations to Nick and Joyce for receiving those awards. They represented those this morning. Nick didn't know he was gonna get it until this morning, and I guess they, his name was in the program, so when they got in the, the room, they told Nick to go somewhere. They took his program, they ripped the page out, and they put it back down. And then his first notice of getting it was, they're going through the awards, and all of a sudden, his picture, I think, they said, Judy, and he came up on the screen, and that's when he, what am I doing up there? You know, so, so it's a real, real nice honor.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's nice.
That's all I got.
That's great, thank you.
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah.
On the construction. The hole will start to be dug when?
Probably, you won't see much going on until June. You might see some landscaping, some dirt moving, and so on and so forth, early spring. Not much, because we can't do a whole lot. We gotta keep that traffic and equipment and everything like that coming in and out of there is gonna, we can't disrupt the school.
So you're, you're purposely waiting until school's out before you start any?
Well, sort of, Tim, because I think it's, if we can get in there and start pushing some dirt around, we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Because if we can isolate any heavy equipment, you know, into that boundary without interfering with the roadway, drop-off, pickup, kids, anything like that, we'll do it. But it'll be minimal.
Okay.
And then as soon as the, when that last bus gets out the driveway, then they'll, they'll go at it.
And fall of 18 is, is not gonna be the start date, but you're hoping maybe by December?
Probably January.
January.
December, January.
So start of the second semester, roughly, is what you're looking at?
Yeah, we'll move seventh and eighth grade in at that time.
And sixth grade will finish out at the elementaries, obviously, right?
Right. And as soon as we move them out of that building, we'll start demolition, because then we gotta get that whole site prepped with a new parking lot and everything like that. So it's, it's gonna be tight.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't have a groundbreaking date yet?
No, we'll, we'll figure out one and get it set, sort of gauging on the weather, and we'll talk with the architects at our next meeting, and probably April, when the weather's halfway nice.
Should've been this week.
Fridays, yeah.
Okay, thank you. At 9E, the treasures report is available in the board docs library. And 10 future agenda items, we have the Technical Excellence Scholarship Approval, March 8th, Finance Report, the Resolution awarding, awarding the sale of the $9,990,000 General Obligation Refunding Bonds, March 8th, Superintendent's Evaluation, March 8th, and that is due by the board members on February 28th. The Instructional Services Report, Annual Assessment Report, World Language Trip Approval, and the Youth Options Request, March 22nd, and the Board Self-Evaluation on April 12th. And item 11, the Board Meeting Debriefing. Any comments? And item 12, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Motion by Mr. Alexander Jovich, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wickowski. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 6:42.